School Board of Directors for Mount Pither, Roxbury District. Two agenda changes, one addition and one change. Lisa Frost has asked to have her name approved for a court, so we can... There seem to be some problems around that. So, we can formally nominate and vote on her candidacy for court, so we can have a court.
You need to go on the white panel.
Okay. Let's kind of go the first order. And the second is, at the board governance discussion, the current agenda says to review and approve the negotiations committee charge. We are going to do the finance committee instead of negotiations committee. We will do negotiations committee next week, which is given in order of how this committee charges together. So let's recall the comment first, just quickly. Here. So then, what are we...Lisa first?
So my name is approved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Can we review quickly the deal for the court? We definitely have to have one. I will work with Lisa to formalize those.
At the last meeting, you discussed that their major duty is to make sure they're immediately out of post.
Yes.
In appropriate place.
So to make sure we meet the posting requirements and minutes that are taken, that she does not take them, she just makes sure they're taken?
Exactly.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah, most of these, you know, other...
Yeah.
Right. And I think we said this time around, if anyone was willing to step up to the position, was going to be willing to explore options for how this is done and to ensure that we're doing things correctly and...
Yeah, I know this is a...Lisa and I have kind of developed that is, things like maybe increasing visibility of people on the front of the forum and, you know, Facebook pages, and that side of the discussion pages, so people have more channels where they're seeing events and seeing things and stuff like that. But I'll work towards that. So, any further discussion? Vote to nominate or to abort? Lisa, it's approved.
Aye.
Aye. Are you opposed?
Great.
Is that a court? Consent agenda? Do I have motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Discussion on that? Or court? Any favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? And then, how's the voting process?
Yeah, I just realized that we don't have a production ability here, and I didn't think about that early enough. So, I was going to show you all something, but I'll talk about it and I'll share it with everybody, and we can certainly push it out in public as well. So, one of our focuses this year, in the beginning of the year, is building a district-wide collaborative culture, which I've spoken to you all before. So, I wanted to share with you some steps that we've taken thus far in doing that. Every first Monday of the month, I've been given this gift of a district-wide staff meeting that is unique, and we don't get that very often, and we have a small enough system that we can do that. So, we have everybody come to the high school, and in the past, they've done book discussions and protocols around that and things like that. We're taking a different take on it. We had our first one a couple months, or a couple, best month, and we timeline'd our entire history of it as educators. So, across all the walls in the high school, using Post-its and things, people, everybody in our district put up when they started working for Mount Pither, Roxbury Public Schools. Everybody in the district started, talked about their past history as to why they became educators, big moments in their life as students, that one of them made them become educators, things that really touched them, things that frustrated them. Other questions were, what class was that class that you just remember for whatever reason and why? What was that student, particular moments in your teaching career? So, it was pretty phenomenal. It was a...while logistics weren't great, the story that the Post-its told was goosebump, you know, goosebump, reasonable. So, it was fantastic. There were some really funny Post-its, there are some really touching Post-its that were about just coming into their identity, you know, all that kind of stuff. So, you're like, get some, you can see some pictures of this. But I just wanted to let you know that that kind of thing has happened, and it looks kind of like this. We have all of these now. You see, this is the 2018, and things like dabbing, and one of my favorite ones, in 2018, I learned I hate Fortnite. And some funny ones that were great, the Black Lives Matter flag being raised was a theme that popped out. It was interesting because I had learned a lot around, when I was planning this particular logistics, Heather wasn't there for two days, who was my lifeline, so things like this. And so, I didn't realize how many, I didn't know when educators were hired and when they weren't. So, I made an assumption that in the 90s, 80s and 90s, a lot of people would have been hired. I was way off. So, that's one of our logistical challenges, because the most people you can see were hired between 2010 and 2018, just from that visual of the Post-its right there. So, that was, it was just fascinating. So, we put this on a timeline, we put them by theme, and if you really look up close, you can see some really touching pieces here. And I think it was pretty great for the staff in general. This was one of my favorites. Was the 1960s to 69. And, sorry, I can't post it, but it talks about Woodstock and JFK, and it's like a history class right here on the 60s. And the teachers who put these events up and talked about how they influenced them as educators was a fascinating conversation. And then, what was even more fascinating was when the young bucks like me came behind them and started talking about that as well. That was really something, you know, and talking about what grade you were in when the Challenger explosion happened, and how that influenced you later in life, and if you were integrated or if you were teaching during that time, which you still have a few. So, it was just a fascinating conversation, brought people together, and that's how we started this work around collaborative culture, where our influences is as educators, because I think that's really important to celebrate our history. So, this learning focus is really quick today, I just want to share that with you. Sorry that I can't project it here, but I just thought you might find that interesting how we're starting that. Our next step with this is to look at our current realities around evidence of where we are in student learning and have some great conversations about that. And then, the next step after that is where do we go about that altogether as a step. So, just wanted to share with you as first steps and probably this collaborative culture.
Did you say it was Monday that you have these?
Yeah. Yep, first Monday of every three months.
Can you see people show up?
They have to, because I am.
Oh, yeah.
And did it, and we'll follow it up very quickly. So, yes, part of their contracted hours.
Great.
Yep. Some other things are, next month in November, our student reps are starting with us at Mount Harper in Hope, Colorado. We're very excited to join us, lovely, articulate young women that I think are going to be a really good bonus to the board. And then, they're just starting to use the same...I'm sure how they were determined instrument. Like, the great companies named Forward to us, so do you know how they were chosen?
I'm not sure, that was just about...
The student council, I know they have a path to path.
I know, so that's...
I don't know if they're part of that.
And you can ask questions. One thing we haven't been real great at in the past few years is really engaging them. They sit, they listen, they go home, they don't complain, that they don't really, they're invited to be close in the discussion.
And I've actually taken all the lunchtime, I remember, and had discussions with them about how we do that. Likewise, even though they sit, they also don't like it when you suddenly remember they're there, and somebody says, "Oh, what do you think?" About something they have no background on or haven't been studying, and so, I think we have to...
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, and we're actually trying to be inspired, so we'll see if we can start to ask for that.
And I'm new to this board having student representation, but the new board has much more in terms of committee capacity than the old one, so that might be a better opportunity to really get the students engaged in maybe a smaller, more safe environment.
I've already met with them once, they're very, I asked them, I said, "How do you want to, do you want to do kind of a student thing and then leave? Do you want to stay for the whole board?" And they said, "I want to stay for the old board, babe. I want it all."
We can talk about, I can talk about in the past, was about their reporting on something that's happening in school, whatever. And they were interested in prior what we talked about, it's another high school student, you know, and I said, "Oh, I'll go to the middle school."
I talked about that with them.
"I'll have the elementary school," so I thought that was...
Yeah, I have talked about how do they get perspectives and kind of reports from student populations that they don't want, you know, that aren't part of, so they have it on their minds. I think these two are going to take and apply, we'll just see some edits before they can do that.
Well, and the simple thing too, I'm not sure if it's in the past, but just, provided they're checking in before the meeting and saying, "Are there items here where you could want us to say something?"
What you said about being surprised when you finally ask them, I think that leads to, you know, them not feeling empowered, right? Because how could they prepare if they've never asked?
Yeah, we'll get them ready.
Yeah, but I think, I think we can do that as a group too, by just regularly expecting them to be participating, and then they'll be prepared, because they'll realize they're going to get called out, and they've been heard for an opinion, you know, or whatever.
And knowing these ladies, I don't think they'll have a problem.
That'd be rude. Do the student reps have a formal role on the board?
My imagination, they will be giving some reports from the student perspective of what's happening, the data items that are happening, and then we'll have to really think about how they can...
I don't think it's defined, but they know the hour.
Also, they're concerned that if we brought the student council, they'd write to you.
I mean, why would I ever have to define a school for it? That's what I'm wondering, then, in the...
And there's been thought and a lot of discussion about this, we have a fear about representing everybody if you're an adult board member. So, if you're asked to sit in front as a student board member, are you giving just your opinion? Or are you talking to some people without, or are you expressing an opinion, you know, as a representative of the student?
Okay, I'm just writing some thoughts myself. So, that's exciting. The innovation reading and discussion, I did not plan any formal protocol for anything. I'm just curious as to what popped out at you all. Usually, when I do a non-formal protocol, what popped, what made you think, what questions, what challenges could you make?
So, my wife saw that I was reading that, and she's read the book, and she sent me all of its editions.
She's got additional homework there.
Well, I was reading it, and the book was a good talk by Carl Baer that was meant in the book, which I thought was really good, you know, five moments of that innovation. Just the idea of thinking about it, one of his first ones was the idea that book stories have gone out of business, but...
Or something.
It wasn't that people didn't want to hear the stories, they just access the stories quickly, they access the student technology, and just that thought was sort of what I think of that as the mid, how you do it.
Well, I like to focus too on kind of those skills that you're trying to, the deeper skills that you're trying to teach, rather than the specific skills.
Rather than the content.
Yeah, and there were some, like, you know, when you posed the question about, what do students need to write more now, like an essay or a blog post? I thought it was interesting, but also, like, honestly, if you asked that in 1936, like, how many professional people had used it for writing essays? So, the, you know, the process of thinking behind an essay and how it's transferable? Not that it's not relevant, but I mean, those are the types of skills, like, being able to, like, are you teaching an essay or blog post, or you're teaching people how to think critically, and how to conduct arguments persuasively, how to back them up with evidence, you know, how to compel people with arguments, et cetera.
I think what, I really want to put words in Carlos's mouth, but I think what he would say is that, yes, and the medium that we teach those things through is essay and on the essay. And in this day and age, knowing how to write an effective blog post quickly, you know, like, getting those ideas across quickly, may have a different way to get it to you than the traditional essay. I don't think he'd say it's neither or. That's what I think is great.
That's what I was wanting to...
I think the emphasis on the different mediums by which information can be purveyed, but what I liked even more than that was the emphasis that these mediums aren't the ends in themselves, that they're the means to get to these other ends. I thought that was an important message.
Well, I think the kind of the longer theme that Jim is pointing out, the almost cliched comment that they use, that we need to prepare kids for jobs that don't yet exist. That's kind of how it's always been. It's like, you know, we're not predicting what technology is going to be like, we have to make sure that they know how to use a software program. It's really kind of along the same thing as Jim is pointing out, you know, we need to make sure the kids have the skills to allow them to teach themselves, how to continue growing on their own, and it's really those, the soft skills that are really important. It doesn't matter if it's, again, 1990, 1980, whatever, you're still being taught, the skills to allow you to move forward independently.
But those are the, those are, that's not going back very far in history, or the history of schools, and I think that in some ways, we don't even operate our schools like 1980, we operate in like 1900, in a sense, in the sense that they're, they're designed for a much, and I don't, I don't mean fully, but we're still coming out of a period of designing for the industrial kind of path, and so, we have a, we have a much slower rate of technology change that we're expecting, and what we need to expect in the future is continual speed. And so, I don't know, I mean, I think that that is a true statement, it is a cliche, it is a true statement, and I don't know that it's true in the way that at least I was educated, no one ever thought that way when I was being educated, we were being educated for the jobs that have always existed, jobs that existed for my teacher's generation at that point. I don't remember ever being taught anything about, you're going to need to adapt. That was never a part of our education.
And I don't think it's now either.
It's not now, you mean?
I don't think so.
But there would have been people in your cohort, in your generation, that would have been taught in the framework that you're describing, but still came up with new designs for instruments, or came up with...
This is quite a...
Should we talk about education?
Yeah. I don't know, I'm just saying this, right? No, I don't know, I mean, I think that, right, the creators, the innovators in many ways have had to always buck everything, right? They would have been taught...
How to do that.
To be liberated, right? Right? They've been, they've had to choose to be liberated against expectations, in a sense.
And I think that's very much the reality still now, if you're looking at the millennial generation and the amount of side hustles and the way people are making a lot of money, you know, it was bucking trends, it's bucking expectations. So, we saw, I told you all, we saw him in a conference, and one of the stories that's sticking with me right now is a student who was out in California, and her dream was to go to UCLA or some school like that, and she had pretty average grades, and, you know, on paper, she didn't get in, she got waitlisted. So, she called up the people making the decisions, the admissions office, and just said, "My name is this, you put me on the waitlist, Google me right now." And so, they Googled her. This girl had created, like, she had millions of followers on her YouTube channel, and showed so much knowledge and growth and initiative as an 18-year-old, that they immediately said, "You're in," from her, from just Googling her, right? So, and she did that in spite of school, you know, because her school record did not indicate that she was this famous YouTuber to millions of people in her generation.
Her school couldn't integrate that.
Right.
Right.
You know, I just read this other article about college debt, and the amount of people that are in their 30s or in that age range, that are paying huge sums of money for their college debt and don't have a job, because, you know, they went to a lower-lard school or they didn't, or they were, got a job and didn't. And I think it's our job to help people be innovative. Some of the people with the most money in the world don't have a college degree. They were innovative thinkers, and they did need one. I'm not suggesting no one go to college, I'm just saying, we need to rethink that too.
On a total different note though, so I generally agree and value the perspectives in the body of this, but I thought the beginning of this, change almost never fails because it's too early, it almost always fails because it's too late. I, because it was on the front of this, I thought about it. I was on, I was on the plane when I first picked this up, and then, it's just kind of been my face on the table every morning.
Andrew White was around.
And that quote, which isn't his quote, he's grabbing it from this set government, I don't know who that is, but I do think that there's, I was thinking about that, and I don't know how accurate that particular statement is, like, take for example...
It's totally accurate.
Yeah.
It's written all the time.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and I think particularly with regard to new technology, particularly information technology, like at the state level, like, you know, the health benefit exchange was, Vermont was out front trying to implement this state-of-the-art health insurance exchange, and it kind of had to do that from a policy perspective to maintain its programs for lower and middle-income working people. But because we were out front on the front end of that technology, we, you know, we squandered a lot of, or not we, but the state of Vermont squandered quite a bit of taxpayer dollars during that effort, and so did other states that were out front on that. And meanwhile, and at the tax department where I work, there were some early IT systems that really fell flat on their face and were horrible and ineffective, and the new IT system that we have, it works really well, because it's been developed over 10 years, and there were 10, 15 other states ahead of us who worked out those growing pains and were able to enjoy those, the effects of that. And then, I think of like social media, like MySpace and the earlier versions of social media falling flat on their face, but...
What are you advocating for?
I'm, I'm, I'm not advocating for that. I do think though, sometimes it's, you know, I think with regard to education and our approach to education, we should be thinking innovatively, and pretty much everything you said in here, I generally agree with. But when it comes to some, some more administrative or technological leaps, I think it's all right from time to time to say, "Hey, has any other state done this, or have any other districts done this?" And if they have, learn from what they've done well.
Another thing, I mean, just teaching people to be innovators and the skills behind that, because there's, it's a different skill set, but, you know, kind of like the essay versus blog, who knows if blogs are going to be taken in 10 years? But, you know, I think going back, you know, several decades, you know, education can be taught a couple of skills, and those can get you through life. Now, your skill is really the ability to enter, enter in, be enterprising in new environments constantly.
And do our teachers do that themselves?
Yeah.
That's one of his sticks, is do, do our teachers put them in a position, put themselves in a position where they have to feel that uncomfortableness and learn it themselves, you know? And some of the quotes that he said, he was like, "Kids aren't better at technology than adults are, they just have to push more buttons." Like, "We're worried we're going to mess up," right? So, we don't push the button.
Exactly, you push the buttons until you figure it out.
And then, another one, he said something around, "If you're not able and able and facile to figure out social media type things in this day and age, regardless of whether they're new or old, you are now illiterate." And so, do our teachers know that platform and that medium? And if they shy away from it immediately, they're, they're becoming unable to speak to our kids in a different way. So, it's something that we really have to start thinking about. Anyway, thank you for that. Bringing a couple of little... Always, if anybody's interested in all of it, let me know. You got it? You've got a few copies of it, you're more than welcome to. Andrew has it. So, superintendent report, just some little things to push out. Fall Festival success, thank you to the community, because that was a miserable day and very cold in the dump booth, right Jen?
Yeah.
How many times do your kids dunk you?
One time, twice, maybe once. But a bunch of little kids, they just come up and...
That was fun, right?
Yeah.
It was...
Be there in water.
No, I didn't do it, but I was in the board group, it was cold.
It was definitely hard to contain the shaking. But yes, thank you to the community for supporting our schools and for the parents who put that on. That was pretty impressive. I've been doing fire and police safety walkthroughs in all the buildings, I still have to do the high school, but I've gone through here at Oxbury, the fire chief and police and union, and at the middle school, to make sure our buildings are all safe for kids. And how we doing? Pretty good. We're good, we have some changes, some just cleaning things up that need to happen, particularly from the fire perspective.
In a better way?
Yeah. Yeah. They're all surprises too, so, "Oh, that was just put there today." We're developing a new procedure for volunteers, Heather's been working very hard on that, with a leveling system for volunteers, I know particularly at UAS, that's been a big shift for folks, and we are working to clean that up. Some information was given out probably before we were ready for it to go out, and we're working on those communication structures as well.
Could I ask, just in general, what does the volunteer procedure look like now? I've been asked a little bit about it in the past few weeks, actually, the Fall Festival, that question came up several times.
We're actually modeling ours after Central Vermont, the new school district, which would be the Northfield School District, that has three different levels of volunteers. So, Level 1, you're serving on a interview committee, you don't come in contact with students, that kind of thing, working with the book fair, kind of thing, where it's very limited with parents around and everything like that, which has no background check required whatsoever. Level 2 being that you're in contact with students, so you, but you're never alone with students in any way, shape or form, so it might be volunteering in a classroom, that kind of thing, working in the office, doing, putting books away for the librarian, that would require the Vermont online check that we do very quickly, Heather goes it very quickly through our office. And then, Level 3 would be that you, you may have the opportunity to be alone with kids, which is the full background check with fingerprinting. So, a chaperone who has a group of children by themselves at a farm would be an example.
So, if you were a Level 2 volunteer, so the question that came up at the Fall Festival from several residents' parents, was if I was an illegal citizen, and my student was in the building, was it a child, and I went to accompany them, let's say, on a field trip or something, would I be able to do that with the back, with the, I'm not sure what the Vermont background check would be?
You're an illegal citizen, not here legally, but in a different way.
Show up in the blank, you wouldn't show up in the system at all.
So, you wouldn't be able to pass your background check to be able to accompany? You wouldn't?
Or shed it some screen.
Well, oh, accompany or...
It's not name, date, birth, it's name, it's social security number?
Last four digits. It might well have a social security.
Name, date, birth, and last four, every social security. And if it's a, they say no match, what do they do? They say, they respond, how does it work?
If there's no record found.
No record found is what it would show.
So, you wouldn't, you would be permitted then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you were on record as being, they're trying to find you. Then you'd have a violation. And I was supposed to, it was probably...
Mine check too, it's just Vermont, that's a branch, so it's not an FBI.
No fingerprints?
Right.
I don't know how fast that goes or how onerous that is, but, I mean, I assume you all know there's going to be a chilling effect on volunteerism on that Level 2, but that's going to create a problem for a lot of, it might create a problem for finding resources for teachers on trips, and it's definitely going to cause a problem for... resources for teachers on trips and it's definitely going to cause a problem for some folks that's not volunteering. And so...
Just to be clear, is that Level Three, they should talk about trips and things?
Level Two.
Level Two isn't trips. Level Two is...
So any trip regardless of the intensity of contact would be a three?
If they're alone with children.
Well, I'm not talking about alone with. I'm talking about not alone with. Like, you know, last year I went on a hike with my, with one of the, two years ago, I went on a hike with one of the teachers up to Elmore and there were, you know, me and two other parents and Miss Pierce and fifteen kids or eighteen kids. And so we all kept in visual with each other.
That's different than if you go and was giving, and I give you five kids and say, you're off on your own.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Like I just said in Boston, right? So that's, that would be a Level Three. But a Level Two would...
Which we're equally required to.
Sure. I don't think Level Three is going to, going to have any issues for folks. I think it's the Level Two that has to be finessed to make sure that the district's needs are met, but also that we don't create barriers to, to community involvement in the schools. And I think that we need to be really careful not to overreact is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
What's the main barrier that you see?
I think that folks will be like, I don't want, I don't want to go through any background checks and I don't understand why I have to. I'm never alone with a child. There's always a teacher around. You know, what's the deal?
That mainly, I mean, to be honest, that mainly goes to the sex offenders check with Vermont. I mean, those, that's what we're looking for if, if, what were some of the cases that we've seen, like some of the hits?
DUI.
DUI or, you know, that doesn't, you're not driving kids around, you're not, like that's, there's a piece of it that's us, that's my responsibility to say, yeah, okay. You know, like that has nothing to do with what you're going to be doing with children. It's more of, what I look for is for things that could harm kids.
I think it's wholly ineffective, number one, because it doesn't, it only looks at Vermont. The evidence shows that it doesn't really do that much, it doesn't really help. And the second thing is that it's, it absolutely chills. So if it's a DUI, if you're saying, if you tell them I'm an interesting DUI, it doesn't matter, if I have a DUI, I'm not going to volunteer because I don't want to take a chance. I just think it's a real mistake to be doing background checks on parents unless you have to. And I don't think we have to on Level Two unless you can show me otherwise. I don't think it adds to the safety at all.
Okay, thanks for your feedback. All right, Heather. Comments? All right. So I looked at the superintendent's report this year, this week differently. I took the entry and plan to have an update on the entry plan, so that's why it looks differently, just with what the principals added in and then with my comments so thus far on the entry plan. So free to answer any questions anybody might have. Glad it was a report.
Could I ask maybe a clarifying question? The curriculum assessment, curriculum and assessment section of the report, you said that there was a high level of interest for restorative practices?
Yep.
Among the faculty. Could you just generally describe what restorative practices would entail?
Yeah, so restorative practice and restorative justice is the idea, it's similar, right? So it's the idea that if somebody does harm to students and/or the school building, that they're going to do something to make that up. And it's based on student decisions and, and a lot of conversation.
Okay.
Rather than you'll have detention or you're suspended or, you know, so pretty a lot of talk about restorative practice and restorative justice is definitely big buzzwords going on in education in Vermont right now. And there's some interest in the schools to get going on that.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that helps a lot. I was trying to decide, are we talking about science class? Are we talking about...
Yeah.
This is a project. Okay.
There's a company here, standardized testing results, not matching internal assessments. Why is such a large disparity? Do you mind explaining that a little bit?
So our local assessment plan for what we have, while right now it's incredibly hard to analyze that, those local assessments, because we don't have a place that it's all housed in one place. We don't have a data management system, but we're working on that for next year. From what we can see, our local assessment results, which are done by teachers and kind of subjective because of that, are up here. And our standardized testing is pretty middle-aged. So while those two things are somewhat apples and oranges, they're very far apart and they should correlate in some way. You know, our local assessment plan should be an indicator as to how our kids are going to score on standardized tests. And because there's such a disparity, I, my question is why?
Why that disparity? Yeah, your local assessment should tell you how you're doing up to and so you're ready for.
Yeah, it should, it should definitely correlate.
So it's our internal assessments of standardized testing?
No, it's our internal assessments of student learning and growth.
Okay. But as it relates, because if you want it to correlate to standardized testing, then just correct me if I'm wrong, but if, if, do you want our internal assessments to be a barometer for how prepared they are in anticipation of the standardized test?
Yeah. We should be able to say that we think they're pretty, that the level of rigor we're, we're, we're assessing at and teaching at matches the level of rigor of standardized testing. Right now, I don't know if we can make that statement.
And I would say as a teacher, I'm testing partway through before I get to that. And if my class isn't doing well at all, I know I have to do something differently to raise the level. And if I don't have any tests, I, I might think they're doing great, but I have any assessment to tell me they need a, or different.
So how do you escape that becoming...
Teaching to the test.
Teaching to the test. Yeah. That's what it is. It goes back to the innovation conversation, which is like, you know, a teacher on it that says...
Right, right.
So glad that I nailed the standardized.
So let's make sure we've understood what a local assessment plan is and different types of assessment in a, in a classroom, right? So our local assessments are kind of dipsticks that we take three times a year, right? Usually the beginning or middle of the year and towards the end of the year. They're not a full standardized battery of tests. They generally take two class periods. You know, they're, they're very quick and they should be standardized at some point. Not like S-Back, but that they have benchmarks and protocols and things like that. Some of the ones that our schools use are computerized, so they are more normed and have different preferences. And they're, they're dipsticks. They're screening measures. They're not giving the S-Back over and over and over again, right? That's not what's happening in any way, shape or form. So those pieces have served two purposes. For me, they serve a purpose of looking at our program and thinking programmatically are our kids where we say we think they are, right? And that are not teacher-created tests, things made by other people, right? And then, and they, so they give me that information programmatically. There's other forms of types of assessments that teachers are doing all the time, you know, every day in their classroom to, to gauge their instruction and change their instruction and to do what kids need, right? So that happens all day long, every day. And that comes in two forms, in the summative and the formative. So a good metaphor for that is that your formative is like your checkup, your doctor's checkup, and a summative is your autopsy, right? You're done teaching that minute. You want to see how they've done. But the formative is how they're going along the way and how you need to change your instruction. So all of those things are happening all the time, none of which are adhered exactly towards the S-Back. But it still should be a programmatic measure. So the S-Back is the end-of-year autopsy, right? A big time autopsy, not a teacher-created one, but a big time one. All of our local assessment plans should point to the fact that our kids are ready and prepared for the rigor of that particular assessment. Because if we are getting programmatic measures all the time through the local assessment plan, I don't see what the teachers do on a daily basis. I don't need to see that. But the local assessment is just that kind of measure for us and it's important for us internally to see how our programs are.
Is that an assessment alignment or curriculum alignment with, with the S-Back or with the test at the end of the year?
Curriculum or curriculum alignment. So in our, if, if the S-Back for me, because of where they are, one of the questions I have, I don't know the answer to it yet, is does our curriculum match the rigor of that particular assessment? Because that assessment matches the rigor of what the Common Core is and we have to go by the Common Core, right? Not to confuse Common Core State Standards with the S-Back, they're not the same thing, right? So, so with that in mind, I want, I just question that. I don't know the answer to that yet. Our local assessment plan scores are pretty high. I mean, they're, they're not, with the exception of some, some places in some schools on some tests, they're pretty high. So what does that tell us that can, that a kid is reading, that we're teaching with snippets of information? Because generally our screeners are, for reading are snippets. They're not longer text. They're not demanding kids have a whole lot of stamina with text. So Ryan is the librarian, I'm sure you, like, it's different if you're reading a magazine article than you're reading a chapter look.
You may not say it or blog post.
Yeah, there you go. There you go. So, so there's lots of questions I have about that programmatically. And we're, we're going to dig into that and see if we can find it. Another big flag for us is that there is no way to follow a student in our system right now. And we're having this conversation with the administration team from kindergarten all the way up to twelfth grade, because we're not using similar, similar ways to measure them. So when a kid goes from fourth grade to fifth grade, how are we having that conversation as to where that kiddo is academically and how do we support them? Because they're not talking the same language at the moment in terms of our assessment plan. So there's lots of questions around that piece with the local assessment plan that, because there's such a difference in the S-Back scores in the local assessment plan, that just the questions come up. They're good questions to ask and they're good questions to dig into. I have a good idea.
Libby, you mentioned that the data management system is underway. Do you have the resources to do that? Yeah, I think we budgeted some for that in the last budget, but yeah, so the resources.
Really, did you?
Wasn't that the point of adding somebody else with IT?
Uh, yeah, yes. We're not talking about a person, we're talking about a software program.
But wasn't that the idea, part of the idea of adding a person?
Is that we have the software but no one to run it?
That we needed someone to help put capacity in the central office.
Yeah, that was a capacity question.
Data collection.
Are you talking about the need to purchase an off-the-shelf solution or source?
We, we are going to do that for software, yeah. But we don't need extra money to do that. We're finding that money elsewhere. That, that by being more efficient with our software purchases that we have in the past, we will pretty easily be able to come up with the money for that without any extra budgetary expense.
That's, that's great.
I, I also love the family going in. I love the family. That you're, you're out and about once a month with your team.
Oh, I remember.
And you were saying it doesn't happen as much as you'd like. Well, I'm just excited that you're doing it because when I talk principals, it's, there are a lot of principals that actually never, they're not getting any of their observations done, so I'm glad there's a model of, you know, to do it.
Our principals...
Not necessarily here, I'm not in any way...
Your principals are in our classrooms a lot.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
The other question is, how have, did you, like you said, you had some earlier. Can I say, three more?
I can ask a lot more. I just have some small ones. Like I was wondering, do you have an award chart for the administration? Because there's a lot of...
Very basic one right now.
Yeah.
Very basic one. And with the budgetary cycle, should we be able to get, hire a human resource officer? I'm going to reshuffle responsibilities at the central office level because of that, because things will be taken off people's plates and we need to be more efficient with other things and we need to add some responsibilities on the central office level. So I hesitate to do that right now without knowing that position is going to come or not.
Do you have any idea what's driving the disparity in attendance?
Jen asked me that today or there. I have some ideas on, on that. I'm sure Heather and Tracy have some ideas on that too. There are several factors that could be coming into play around the disparity in attendance. But I have, there's some. I mean, one is that they're little kids and have nine noses or don't have proper hygiene there. Others are that, while I know, I couldn't tell you the exact data on this, it might be that we have younger teachers at the elementary school because that's, that's a trend in many places and they have smaller children and so their kids get... You know, like there, it could be that. It could be that there's, hasn't been a real high level of insistence that they're there at that particular building and that they're missed when they're gone, you know? So there are lots of things that are flowing around in my mind around why the discrepancy. But it's big, it's noticeable.
If you're a new student too, you catch everything in those first couple of days.
Well, I mean, I think, I can speak just antecardally that when my children are and were in elementary school, it was made very clear to us and we were very appreciative that, that educational experiences outside of school were valued and that if, if we had our children doing things, traveling or whatever it might be, that that was actually really...
Oh, no, 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 this is referencing teacher absence.
Teacher absence.
Sorry, Steve.
Okay, no, 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 it's my fault. I didn't read it carefully enough.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. We haven't noticed that.
I haven't tracked student absenteeism yet. I haven't tracked that data.
That's, well, that, that totally wrong. So actually, I've never noticed that. Have you as a parent?
I am not as a parent.
No.
I haven't heard...
You know, the number of sub, days of substitutes or whatever we experience.
Seems normal to you.
Never experienced that. Never seen a lack of commitment or a lack of any kind of, it's never felt that way.
Yeah, no, my kids don't. They don't forget they come home.
Same, I guess.
Yeah.
What does it mean under federal grant investments? It says through leadership for a LEAF when taking the reins in July. It's on, we're going to check in the last page under...
That was referring to the fact that when we started, we being Mike and I started on July third or whatever it was, we found out that the, that decision program plan hadn't been submitted and what, we didn't have any information on it. And we, that's, that's just referencing that we had to do a very quick turnaround around that piece and rewrite the entire thing very quickly.
Mike said that would be presented.
Yeah, yeah, that's what that's referencing.
Okay.
Going forward, it will be a much cleaner process because we'll have a better sense.
Excellent. Do you feel like you've had opportunities to connect with the broader community? I've seen you at lots of events, I'm just curious. So I know you've been there, I just was curious if you feel like that.
I think I can do more of it. I'll tell you honestly, I was telling Jim earlier today, it's not my strength because I'm such an introvert. Like I really, I really have to force myself to get out and talk to people who are not immediately connected to education. So it's my own personal, like, I got to do that. So I really have to look to, for areas that I can and I, I ask, and you're here to support me in that and say, let me go. You know, I've reached out to Tina and I'm going out to the senior center with Tina. So if there's any opportunities for me to be more visible in the community at events and things like that, then please, I welcome that feedback, particularly in Roxbury. Because it, because I haven't seen, I haven't been able to be part of the community very much here in Roxbury, so, or meet many people from Roxbury. So I welcome any feedback or invitations and that kind of thing to get me out there more. But yeah, I have been there, I've been there, I can.
I've seen you at lots of...
Yeah, I actually have done a pretty good job in covering the bases.
I'm trying to be that smiling face.
Yeah. There's some places that are, you know, I think you're investing time in places that matter from the position you're in.
I think one thing we recognized when we, when you were hired was that it was going[1672.60] I think one thing we recognized when you were hired was that it was gonna be, I don't know if we use this term with you, but we used it, so just kind of ground you to your desk for a while. The idea is that you really had a lot of work to do to kind of get on track.
Yeah.
And that we recognize that, you know, the bureaucratic pieces and then the teacher relationships were gonna have to come, the staff relationships were gonna have to come first. It's gonna take many months to get through that stuff. But then there'll be a time down the road when you feel like, okay, it's going the way you want it to and we can introduce you to more people out in the community and have you be more that communication face. So I don't think anyone feels like it's a deficit at this point, but I think it'd be great as we move forward and you feel like, okay, I got five seconds in my day now, we'd love to introduce you to more people. In the old days, there used to be things like, you know, somebody'd have a party at their house when a new administrator would come on. And they'd meet, you know, 30 of their friends and those friends just happened to talk to everyone else in town. And so it was a chance to just, people to get to know you on a human level. So those things could still happen if there was time and, you know.
Yeah, thanks for that. I'm a little bit of a perfectionist, so I know it's an expectation, so I have it on my plate.
Yeah, but again, you know, there's a time and place for everything. So we really appreciate everything you're doing. And also, I think that the principals have been really doing that, they've stepped up their game. I think especially, I've noticed that, you know, elementary and middle, they really, they're kind of like doing more communication. And then I think, you know, Mike Barry has taken up the mantle of Mr. Communicator. So that has really supported everything that's going on by, I don't think people are feeling like, where are those administrators? They seem to not even exist, you know, there's nothing like that going on, so I think you're okay.
Good.
And even though there are a few glitches yet to do on the website, I think that helps for the people who don't have any kids in the system. So when they're looking for someone, you can go to the website, we'll get so they can find it.
Have you other questions or comments or feedback to look into even more deeply?
Yeah, this is a great report.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Very informative and easy to understand.
I love how it's not really in narrative format.
Steve likes the bullet points, that's what I'm learning.
Tablets, outlines, I think I'd be leaving more than two sentences.
Remember that essay blog discussion?
This is the refined form of the blog now. Okay, as long as your social servants need it.
You ready to wind up the budget?
Sure.
Any committee outreach to report?
I dropped the committee out at the Fall Festival.
So we were at the Fall Festival, which I thought was really nice. I don't know if those who were there later had more people to talk to. Not that many people stopped by when Becky and I were there, or Michelle was there earlier. But I will say that we were able to have longer conversations with a couple of people. Michelle and I had a long conversation with a parent about the health curriculum, which I think has continued to be a topic of discussion and some action in the community. And I had a long conversation with him about dressing. So it wasn't, even though I didn't talk to that in the school, an opportunity to get more in-depth. Lisa, thank you, school board members. Leaders start time for middle school and high school to correspond with natural time slots of teenage groups. Less fundraising for kids, better funded field trips. Foreign language commitment at Union and Beyond. Continue to focus on diversity, equity, and anti-bias training. This must be ongoing, accountable, and a high priority. Thank you for your service. Some of the little sticky notes, I think they're from some of our younger constituents.
Ryan and I have a large collection of young people who plan to add into the box. You probably could tell them.
Yes, the four-day week suggestion. Be kind about the vision. More recess, also another vote for the four-day week.
It is a thing in some places.
Six-day week, please. Having more time for science, keep kids at the top of priorities. A note of gratitude. Students and families of color need a safe avenue to address concerns. Who can we talk to when something doesn't feel okay? Who will listen? Who will respond? A request for more collaboration across all of the schools and grades. More opportunity to dress up.
Can we say that one of those things is perfect?
I know, they're great. So thanks a lot for coming.
Answer which question?
Which question?
The question about who students of color and families of color can talk about issues that they're facing in a safe and private manner.
Yeah, absolutely. You can come to me or any one of the principals at any given time. I had the opportunity with these three, actually, Richard, Stephen, and Ryan, to speak with the wonderful students involved in racial justice alliance. When was that, Tuesday? Monday?
Monday.
Monday.
Monday. Such an articulate group of people. And I had a private conversation with Marion afterwards, saying, you know, my office is right there, so come whenever you want to. And she said, I've never heard that before, you know, thank you, I might take you up on that. I was like, please do, and then I saw her mom in the hallway later. I introduced myself and gave the same message to her mom. So yeah, anytime any community member wants to come talk, just let me know. Doors open, and kid, especially kids.
And I think we're looking at a more systematic response to that also, in addition to the fact that everyone on staff, especially leadership, is preparing itself and is already prepared, but is increasing its skills to be able to be those avenues of safety. But we're also looking at a more systematic approaches, too. And so it's part of the proposal from the students that we're considering policy. So we're a little ways from being able to, hopefully next time, we can talk about it more seriously and show you guys what they're working on and what we've kind of, how we're responding to it. But it's, yeah.
There's also, there's a very formal response in that we do have a hazing harassment and bullying policy. And under that policy, we have people who are the designated reporters in each school. But I think the hope is that there are less formal channels.
That's really important, though, what you just said. Because I think people may not understand that there are actually, that when anything occurs related to basically harassment, that it instantly triggers action by the district. And so, you know, there's a process that has, that occurs, and that's a state mandated process effectively. So at least there needs to be one.
We just had three or four of our administrators attend an HHP training just one day this week.
Is that policy available on the website?
Yeah, with the procedure.
Well, I think it's really important for the district to aim to have every adult who's in a supervisory capacity with children, teachers, et cetera, be people who are trained to deal with these issues and be able to talk to students and have students feel that they can come to them and have it be handled in a sensitive and effective way, even if that's not the end of the chain.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I think short of that or enhancing that in addition to the issues of like a safe response or a safe person to go to, one of the things that we're all working on this year is raising all of our competency around this as a district so that the experience a student has in the hallways or in the classroom or in a complaint procedure, whatever it may be, that it's done with much more understanding of race and really all cultural sensitivities, too. And so there's sort of a sense of, we've got a long way to go, we know it, and we're working on it now. This is the year we're working on it effectively. So, and it began, honestly, I think, to some extent with the administrative hirings we did as we really kind of started to take this very seriously. Well, it actually began with Black Lives Matter flag. That really began with the students, right? And then it translated directly to that. And so the challenge from students has been, let's take the symbolic action of the Black Lives Matter flag and turn it into a district mission, right? And that's sort of that transitioning from a symbolic action to actually turning our district towards it as a, as part of our core mission is what we're working on now.
That's great.
So I took your advice and took the grants.
Five?
Yeah. And went to the seniors, a group of seniors. And so their comments were they knew we're coming up to paying the bond this time around, right? And that it was, nonetheless, even after that, it's hard for them to comment unless they know how it's gonna affect their taxes. And so that's understood. And they felt that Montpelier was still above average for people's spending. And that they wanted you to know if they're gonna pay for the bond payment, they can't afford much more.
Is Montpelier above average for people's spending?
No. We're actually right on average, basically. We're so close that it's, in fact, this year it might be different than it was last time.
And I think that includes, I think that's kind of Washington County based, too.
Well, we're actually below average for Washington County. Aren't we? I think we're the second lowest in the county.
I think we're one of those.
Yeah, and we're, but we're average for the state.
Libby, can you remind me, at the Fall Festival, when we were standing there, we had a box where people were putting comments in for the vision, and then we had a tablet that people were writing down themes. Everything you just read was an amalgamation of all that, correct?
Yeah, I don't think the difference really came across that well. So I think what really mattered was, did you want your comment to be visible? Or did you want your comment to go in the box? Which is fine. It was my first time.
Yeah, we tried to get some feedback for the vision, but it doesn't seem like we really got anything to direct that effort.
I think as we realized at the retreat, putting together a vision is, wait, is very complicated. It's not something probably that was that amenable to people dropping by a table.
Between that and all of this. So is there a way to journalize that stuff somehow so we can keep it in the record of comments for the budget preparation? Isn't that kind of what we're trying to do here, is yours, too? Like, how do we?
We can take that and add it to...
Just a short type-up, probably, and the same with these.
Any more on the outreach? There's some more to do of the members that have reached out to the community about getting it formed together. Seven is kind of our deadline, so.
What day?
Seven. I mean, for it to...
Yeah, really?
Yeah, be meaningfully incorporated.
As I was saying, Lisa attended the open house as a board member. We have talked about going to one of the Monday senior lunches and I don't know if she actually made it or not when I spoke with her earlier this week to make sure that I could maybe consolidate our gatherings. It sounds like outdoor education, stronger focus there was an interest from the Roxbury side, music, and good pay for teachers. It was the limited feedback we picked up from Roxbury, so nothing too crazy, but...
What is the music program? Is there any music developed?
There is, so it's a part-time.
Can we get those in a minute somehow? Maybe just write those three down and maybe put them in with the others or something.
And we'll just have a document that has the themes.
Somebody suggested to me that I go and probably any board member go to, I guess there are parent groups that work on fundraising for different initiatives at the middle school and high school and maybe elementary school level as well. And they thought it would be, I mentioned that I was on the finance committee and they said, oh, well, you should go and hear from these groups about what they're doing and what their interests are.
Somebody has been to the...
Somebody's been to Olive. Put this budget in, put this... But usually feel free to reach out if you just want to talk to people.
Yeah, and it might be good to attend somebody who's just there. Pretty involved with the parents and it's good to introduce yourself to them.
Great. How do I get information about how to contact them? Is that through Libby?
Yeah, some of me, not I can get through.
And the meetings are on the calendar. Thank you very much.
There you go. You can have the calendar and the website. Thank you, Mike Barry.
Ready for playground update from Andrew?
Yep.
Andrew, you want to join just at the end of the table, though?
Sure, yeah, sure. So I'll give you, before I get into sort of this piece that I think was the impetus for Mike joining us, joining you, playground committee has a little update as to where we're at with that. We had a job meeting this morning, we're having, well, we have weekly job meetings on Wednesday mornings. The vestibule foundations are in, they were backfilling today. Steel is gonna start being erected end of next week. This is, don't believe it until you see it, but that's the schedule I have here. So as I said, concrete is poured, backfilling, steel next week. The inner courtyard, they have disposed of all the contaminated soil. They are in the process, over the next few days, doing their underdrain. Basically gonna be buttoning up the dirt work in the courtyard, probably the end of this week, early next week. Basically putting that to bed for the winter. Their next main focus is gonna be working on the retaining wall, doing some work, working through some of the details and some of the best ways to tackle some of the walls, construction, whether we do sheet piling this temporary, all kinds of means and methods stuff.
Is that just the wall on the back or is it on the side, too?
Just on the back.
Okay.
Just on the back, yeah. So they will be, they're gonna be working on that over the next couple of weeks. But they are looking good to, then they'll be moving to the upper courtyard. They're kind of waiting on that while they do some staging, leave some staging area for the vestibule work and access to the back. But they're feeling very good about being sort of all the heavy lifting done this winter before they button it up for the...
So is all of the contaminated soil gone?
No, just the inner courtyard, yeah, just the lower.
And will the soil from the top be gone before winter?
I'm sorry?
The contaminated soil that's on the top?
Probably most of it, yeah, yeah.
Somebody asked me that the other day.
Yeah, yeah, their hope is to basically have all the excavation done, kind of rough grading, get it stabilized for the winter, maybe pour the staircase, that's just sort of, because that's sort of, everything's gonna build off that staircase that leads up to the nest. That'll be weather dependent, but they're in good shape with regards to schedules, so that's good news. So I, a couple of weeks ago, three, four weeks ago, I was asked to meet with the playground committee group. Kind of their concern about that, because they're so heavily involved throughout the whole process, that gap, that domino that we had to push about taking the equipment out of the lower playground to get the project going so we could, to get to the point we are now. And as part of that, they asked that I put together a little financial summary and a little, some of the key pieces they wanted to know was sort of financially, where were we and what would it cost to put the drawings back, the project back as it was bid, as well as sort of some of the key dates with regards to when some of these decisions had to be made, and also sort of just financially where we are. So what I put together was a little document here, which I'm sure Grant cringes at my use of the word balance sheet. But it's a little document that I put together and I'll explain it before I hand it out. That basically, what I put here was all the revenue sources that we had for the project, bond, fund balance, grants. Over here were all the expenses to date. This basically reflects start of construction. And what it told us was that we had a positive balance of $186,000. So, once we get into construction and we start taking into consideration some of the disposals, fees of the soil, which we found an off-site, a local depository for the, some of the yellow soils, but we have to pay to do that. So there's gonna be, there's gonna be a cost associated with that. But we also get a credit from the contractor because they don't have to ship it to Coventry. So again, a balance sheet is sort of where we may see some extra money and then where we're gonna see additional expenses. So we're all shuddered out. These are very rough numbers, but luckily when I was at the playground committee meeting, their numbers kind of matched up with mine, so I was happy about that. So where it stands right now, sort of best-case scenario, we don't run into any oil tanks out there, everything continues. As the project stands, we've got about $62,000 on paper anyway towards being able to reinstitute the playground, the inner courtyard. Which also comes free until you look at the second part of this, which is those big chunks that we had to take out of the project to get it rolling. And because of the nature of, you get your best price when you put a product, when you put it out to bid. When you got three other people, you know, bidding against you. And everything is coordinated smoothly. So as you put things back into the project, they get a little more expensive. Some things are kind of a wash, some things, not so much. So some of the major components that we brought out was the amphitheater, which to put the amphitheater back in is anywhere between $30,000 and $40,000.
That's on the upper playground.
That's the upper playground amphitheater. That one's a decision that we're probably gonna need to give ECI somewhere in January or February. They don't need to know that right now, because it's gonna need to know it soon, relatively soon.
Is that why it says construction priority, Andrew?
Yes, yes. Second piece, big chunk that we looked at, was the fire lane and sidewalk. Basically, I apologize for not bringing the plan, but basically from the vestibule down to the cafeteria, that was originally designed to be concrete. We took a cost savings to turn that to asphalt. Still gonna be structurally sound, still gonna be a fire lane. But concrete is nicer than asphalt and... concrete is nicer than asphalt and, but that's a 40 to 60,000 dollar add to put that back in. Site lighting, this action number, we, we actually have, we lucked out on that one in that we found a less expensive fixture. Light fixtures are amazing, because you can buy a light fixture for $2,000. But somebody makes one that looks pretty darn similar, if it's up high enough from outside or whatever, you wouldn't know the difference for, you know, a, a third of the price or a quarter of the price. So actually, we were able to put the site lighting back in for $2,500. I've already approved that. Lower playground equipment, so this number is anywhere from 10 to 150,000 dollars. And that is one of the things that we, we need to explain to people is that if someone comes in through that door and says, here's 150,000 dollars, we can build that back the way it was drawn. And if somebody comes through with 40,000, we're not gonna turn away because we can't get exactly what was drawn. We will take that 40,000 dollars and we will talk with the administrators at the school and the, the people that know best of what the right equipment for the kids are if we have a limited amount. And we will integrate that back into the design. So, but the takeaway is, we took about 150,000 dollars worth of play equipment out of the inner courtyard. And this, with regards to that, I make that comment about someone giving up money that was in the context of a fundraising group. Bunker core got a sidewalk, we had a sidewalk that went through, 20 to 35,000 dollars. Again, the one that was drawn is part 35,000 dollars, if we do one that was less, it's gonna be less. That's another one that, depending on when we give, if we give them the okay to do it now, it's gonna be cheaper than if we give the okay after they do the grading and, you know, more refined grading. Plantings, we took probably, we did took close to 60,000 dollars worth of plantings out of the project. Again, that's a number that we don't have to, you know, 60,000 dollars are dropped out of. We get, we decided to put 15, we can put 15 back in.
Could you explain, you skipped over the, a lower courtyard mulch.
Yes, so as part of the design, there was a large area of the lower courtyard that was a mulch.
Not where they're playing, just a mulch?
And there was areas that were under equipment, there was areas that were just large mulched areas.
So what would you put under the equipment if you didn't put the mulch?
Oh, we would do it, definitely do it under the equipment.
You have to.
Absolutely, yeah, under the equipment, but they, like I said, there were large swaths that were just mulched areas. Whether they had a sandbox in them or a lower play structure.
And those would be grass instead, or?
That's what, that we put a place, when we did our, let's get the, let's push the domino over, we priced, put soft, put grass in there. And we knew that if we decided to do some mulch or decided to do something else, we at least had, it was in any other terms, I would've said we would, we put $4 a square foot out there, and whatever it turns out to be, it turns out to be.
So is that what the 10 to 40,000 dollars represents, the area mulch?
Right, if we wanted to put it all back, if product cost was 40,000 dollars, put that mulch back, and it was thick and deep, then mulch is expensive. You gotta maintain it.
In keeping it, there's some rules that we have to maintain it to a certain depth as well.
It's, yeah, it's not just.
It's not a one-time cost.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, does that have.
Well, that's what I was thinking of, even under playground equipment, it's a debate for years about what's best under playground equipment. And whatever you put, you have to maintain it because the kids mess it up, so there you go.
But remember, we've been mulching on these playgrounds for a long, long time. I don't know if we've been doing it well, but we've been doing it, so we've had that in our budgets.
Again, plantings, we took close to 60,000 dollars worth of plantings out. And then there was sort of miscellaneous bike racks and flagpoles and other sort of things that we took out to, to push the domino. So, we needed, when we, when we got our 1.9 and we needed to get it down to 1.3. And this is actually probably reflects more of the sort of 1.6 down to 1.3. Because the, that, when the bids came in at 1.9, we were able to take 300 grand out of it pretty easily without really affecting anything, you know? No one was gonna notice that we substituted 10 linear feet of granite for grass, those sorts of things. So this, this really reflects that 1.6 down to the 1.3, which unfortunately translates to 4.40, that 300,000. So that's, that, that, this was sort of the, the summary that I conveyed to that group.
Thank you, yeah.
What was the discussion from that group?
They rightfully feel a lot of pride in, in the work they've done. And it's a large group. And it varied from some very strong feelings about what should be done and how we should do it to, you know, we do need to make some compromises. And I think there's also a acknowledgement that though they are focused on this project, there's a larger bond that affects a lot of students in other buildings and will affect them as well. And the message I gave them at that point is, let's be patient, because this stuff can all go back in. The amphitheater is probably the one piece that we really said, we really ought to be now, because once we, everything else out here can kind of be done with shovels and a, and a little bobcat. The amphitheater, that you gotta get the heavy equipment in it. Once we build this, we're not gonna wanna put that piece of equipment back there. So.
So you're saying that needs to come under this general, general contract?
I think, I, I think if you said we've got, we're, we need to focus on something, that would be the one that I would say you really ought to focus on right now. Get that, let's get a price for it, let's build it, because again, once we build the, the playground, the work that it's gonna take to put the amphitheater back in is, you're gonna have planting beds and all that, you're just not gonna get the whole, you're not gonna get the backhoe back up there to, to dig and, and put the blocks in to create the amphitheater once you've built the rest of it.
So one of the ideas is use the GC who's on site to finish up the, the big earth moving project. The other pieces can be done under small contracts later?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or now, or whenever, but.
Yeah, we incorporate it as a change order back into the project now, absolutely. Or, again, the play equipment, if, if there's a, however, and I remind myself, policy is not what I'm paid for, so. However, it's decided to, to be done.
Yeah.
And, and that's how it's gonna, and that's something that I, I hope everyone understands is that we're not going back to that original design, unless, unless within the next six months, or, you know, five, six months. There's a big chunk of money that gets committed to it, it's not gonna look exactly. If the intent is gonna be the same, the enjoyment's gonna be the same, it's, it's gonna be a playground the kids and the community's gonna value. It's probably not gonna look like.
I, I think, I'm, I'm just suspending the political discussion for a minute to talk about the efficiency question. What kind of penalty do you pay for change orders?
There is, there's a 15% markup on change orders.
Beyond, beyond the normal.
Beyond, they'll should, they'll, you ask them for what, we wanna put the sidewalk in now. They'll run the numbers and say it's X amount of dollars for cubic yard of dirt and fiddle and all this, and they'll run the numbers and put 15% markup on.
That's beyond the normal 10 or whatever you would pay on everything, or, or is it not?
We don't know what we're paying in markup for.
Okay, okay.
But as part of the bid process, they tell us what you are going to be paying for change orders. And I say 15%, I honestly don't recall what their change order, but that, that's kind of.
It's an error.
Anywhere between 10 and 15.
And would, just to follow up on Steve's question there, would all of these items, if we were to pursue, or if we were to pursue any of these items, would each one require a change order or no?
Well, you, you would do it as, it wouldn't matter, put 15 or something, do 15%.
15% would come on top of any of these.
Right.
So it, they are all changes, so they're all add back ins. So to do them under a separate contract, you could conceivably change, save 15%, but you have no idea what your new contract cost would be, so.
Yeah, and, and that 15%, quite honestly, no, I, I was gonna say, some of these things, they may not even do it. Something double, like a piece of concrete, they may not even do it. Because they haven't, they don't have to come back repair it, they don't have to maintain it, it dies, they don't have to come, they may just say, all right, well, you were gonna pay X amount of dollars for how many cubic yards of asphalt, you're not gonna pay it for. That may be a little generous before, I've gotta remember people in for business, so the 15% is probably gonna be.
I'm at the tail end of a big project myself and I, it's the same nonsense. You're trying to figure out what to do now, what to wait on.
Yeah. And, and that's, and, and I've gotta come a better word than cavalier, but that's just the reality of it. And, and you can't get too worked up about it, it's the position we're in, and to fight it or worry too much about it is wasted energy. There's a situation, there's a contract in place, and changes are changes, and.
And I don't know if many contracts, they get exactly what they wanted in the beginning, but in the end is true, it just doesn't happen.
And the markups, and, and the thing to remember with the markup and overhead and profit and all that is, they're getting paid for service. And if something goes wrong, we pick up the phone and say, come back and fix it. If something heaves or something shifts, there's value there, it's not just giving the money away for nothing.
The plantings, were they, were they just, you know, decorative and enjoyment, or were, were any, are any of them relevant to sort of stabilization or?
No, 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 most of them were decorative, absolutely.
Did you ask the group, or did the group voice to you, you know, if you have the 62,250 dollars, what their priorities were, what they felt like we should spend it?
Libby, you can back me up on this, Libby and I, we're, I apologize, Libby and I both, I think that we just asked them to be patient. That we had time and that, that this meeting was not the time to start thinking about.
We talked, that, that was also one a month ago, it was a while ago, so the idea that, I mean, we're further along in the project now. So Andrew can be a little bit more confident in that, in that number, whereas when we met with them, we weren't confident in that number. So we said, we, we have a punch, we're gonna have that, but we're not positive, so we didn't even allow the discussion to take place because it would've been frivolous.
And, and once we get, it'll be, we got 60,000 dollars in contingency. Once we're out of the ground, so to speak, I don't know what the expression is, civil projects, but once we're, once we're above grade and the mysteries are solved and we don't, we don't run into those oil tanks, you know, we, we know what they're gonna build on top of it, they bid that, so that money will, will free up. But until we're into that position, we shouldn't touch that.
Are you talking about the 62? That's contingency?
The top 62, no. So you'll know more about that when you get to the upper playground.
Absolutely, absolutely. Some of the other things that have changed, that the revenue, this, so the contaminated soils, though we did find an offsite, a local site for disposal, their request is that they wanna build on their property someday, and we're in montillar clay right now. The expectation is when we move to the upper playground, we're gonna hit better soils that they'll want. But right now, the soils that we're pulling out are just clay and, and they don't want them, understandably. So that's being shipped up to Coventry.
Which is not contaminated, just your key soil?
The way, the way soil is sort of categorized, is there's green soil, which is perfectly good. There's yellow soil, which is perfectly good to stay on sites, or the statehouse lawn or within a city limit, an urban limit. There's purple soil, which is contaminated, which needs to go up to Coventry. The yellow soil is unfortunately not, it's montillar clay. And we don't wanna reuse it under our, we don't wanna use it underneath our play equipment, so other people don't wanna use it under their potential future buildings. So that's also going to Coventry until we hit soils that we can ship to bury, or reuse on site.
So which of the soils is buried, they, they're not.
Yellow, good yellow, good yellow soil, not clay, yellow soil.
I get it, all right.
Or we can reuse it on site, but we're still.
So some of the soil is still going to Coventry?
All of it is going to Coventry so far, so far. But that's, again, that's sort of the, the lower courtyard. We think that the upper courtyard is gonna have more fill, more sandy soils that we can ship locally. But there's no guarantee on that, so that, that revenue of 36 is probably is gonna get, I actually, when I showed it to the group, I put it at 75%. I'm down to 50%, so I think that number's actually probably, that revenue's probably gonna go lower, a little lower.
So, so you have, on the amphitheater, you're gonna have two or three months to make a decision on that?
We probably have a little more than that. I was, I wanna be conservative in this. The big piece with that is the drainage behind the amphitheater. As the water comes down the hill, we gotta get it from behind the, the blocks, whatever those are, and tie that into the drainage. But it's a relatively simple operation, so I don't think it's gonna be that complicated.
I do think that it's worth talking about at some point soon, not perhaps tonight, but for us to think about, be very clear about who makes that decision. So that community members aren't upset, and you all aren't upset, and people aren't upset with you, people aren't upset with me and Andrew, and you know that we're very clear about how these decisions are gonna be made.
I mean, I, I do, I mean, I think the amphitheater does have a kind of community component to it.
Every bit of this does.
I mean, every bit of it does, but maybe it goes kind of beyond people with kids.
Oh, I see what you mean, I see what you mean, you mean it has a.
A community value.
A community use behind it. That, you know, I know, 40,000 dollars is 40,000 dollars, given the overall scope of the project, I think to go that if we don't have to, would be an opportunity missed, I think, to tie more people into the space.
I'm interested in exploring what you were trying to say there, Libby, around, around clarifying decision making. And I, I think it's important to community, to board members, because this is an extraordinarily important project to the community. And I think that it is, it is a high budget priority for a lot of us on the board. As, because we hear this, we know it from our community. And so what we wanna do is, you know, I mean, there's good management of a project like this in terms of, you know, well, yes, we can pace things a little bit. We can, if we just spread them out a little bit, we can do everything, that kind of thing. But those are squarely answers that don't satisfy people who are not insiders. And so I think what we wanna be careful of is to not just explain how the decision will be made, but to really be clear what the decision is. And I think that the more we can get that information out early, the better. You know, because for one thing, I would advocate pretty strongly in any budget discussion that we fund the hell out of this thing. I think it needs to be done, and I may be the only one on the board who thinks that way, but I think what we wanna do is really make sure we, we, you know, help us figure out what the best process for getting this, getting the community's input heard, and then integrating that as best you can into what you have to do financially to run the district. So, you know, I think we need to make sure we, we're very clear with everything, not just who's making the decision, but when's the decision gonna be made, and, and what's the, what recourse is there, and all those other things.
And, and the why, so that, for example, if, there's something on the list that Andrew says, well, we could hire somebody later on to put in planting because they were only, and so it's not that it's never gonna happen, but not this year.
And there's a reason for that, right.
Right, and the reason, because I think people wanna know, well, why'd you cut that and put in that?
But not this year is a bad answer, right? It's gotta be in 2020, or whatever, that would be the answer people would wanna hear rather than not this year. Because that, not this year is the ultimate bureaucratic answer.
But as of, you want the promises, we can't.
Let's make some promises and keep them.
There's a lot of need in the system.
Exactly.
And this entire building that got very little out of the bond and has its own playground needs.
Absolutely.
Its own infrastructure needs.
Absolutely.
And there's been a lot of money put into the playground, and it's gonna be a good playground. It's gonna be a good playground regardless.
So let's, let's have that exact discussion so we're clear where we're gonna end up on this. And I see you gritting your teeth a little bit, Libby.
I am gritting my teeth a little bit, as I said in a meeting just yesterday, that Jim can attest to, if I had a nickel for every time somebody said, well, it's just this amount of money. Let's just do, those just this amount of money add up, so there are a lot of priorities and there's a lot of needs. So how do we, how do we put all those things in perspective? So that we're making really good decisions for our financial responsibilities as well as our student responsibilities.
And maybe just be helped by the fact that we're beginning the budget, is that you're right? Season just now to see what are our priorities, are there other ones that are bigger, and how do they all work in together? It's a good time to be talking.
In terms of facility needs, and assuming, I mean, assuming the money doesn't, we don't get more money out of the way this is structured with the contingency, that's a different question, that money's already budgeted. But purely in terms of overall district facility needs, it would be very hard for me to say we should commit to fully fund the playground if we have not gotten a much bigger picture of our facilities needs, and particularly of the needs of the middle. of our facilities' needs, and particularly of the needs of the middle school, which were not addressed in the bond, and which I think are significant. Because I do think it, you know, it's not an endless pie, unfortunately. And I think the pie should be very, very big, but I'm not sure it's an endless pie. And the middle school has to be a priority, too.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the importance is inclusion and communication and thoughtfulness about decision-making and explanation. Kind of ad nauseam, because...
Yeah.
If it, if it trickles out, or if it's an inconsistent process, or if some people know and some people don't, there's gonna be that, you know, game of telephone that goes on. And I think the more consistent and transparent it is, and I think to be honest with where we're not able to make decisions and why. We don't know what the contingency is. Here's what we're thinking about, but we're not at the decision point. Here's what the decision point's gonna look like. Here's the inputs that are gonna go into the decision. Because, I mean, I, I agree with Steve, this is a high priority. I also agree with Bridget that, uh, we, you know, we have to make some choices along the way. And I think we have to make those choices methodically and intelligently. And I, I think we have to work hard to kind of bring the community along with us, even if it's gonna take some, some patience. Because I, I think you're right, Andrew. It's, we're gonna have a great playground, we're gonna have it soon. Uh, it might not be the exact playground people envisioned. It might take another step or two, even to get, you know, to where I think we all want it to be. But I think that communication is key.
And I would suggest that, as we told that group without being patient, this is 1.17 million out of a bond. You've got close to two-something million dollars worth of bids coming in. And like we had to make some hard decisions here, maybe making some hard decisions on the other projects as well. I mean, we all know, you sit at any stoplight in town and you just wonder where all the truck drivers are coming from. I mean, it's, when was the last time we saw this amount of construction in Montpelier? Forget the state, I mean, we can actually see it in Montpelier for ourselves, which often we don't. It's just, it's crazy. It's crazy.
Well, and to Jim's point, I'd say thank you for meeting with us.
Yeah, that's fantastic, and for this work, it's excellent.
And I would, you know, continue to reach out to that group.
Yeah, and we, and we assured them, we assured them that, you know, we weren't gonna be making any, we, 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 um, we assured them that we had things in control and that there were decisions that we had to make on our own, and that we couldn't involve them in every decision, just like we can't involve you guys in any decision. But we have a good sense of, you know, I've been, I was, prior to this, I was an architect of placar design, and designed tens of millions of dollars worth of schools in my career. And I know where the, you know, $2,500 change order to get lights back in the project, I can make that decision. What the amphitheater's made out of, and what it looks like, we're gonna go back to the right group. And I think it sucks, whether it's the group of 12 that we met with, or two representatives from that group and two representatives of this group. But we assured them that we will make the appropriate, we will reach out at the appropriate time and ask for their input and, um, like I say, like that discussion of clarifying that we, we, we're gonna be ultimately the ones, though they've been involved in this process, and a lot of people have been involved in the process, ultimately the phone's gonna ring at Libby's desk and my desk, and so we can, we can be the ones pulling the trigger and stuff. I just wanted to be really clear that we hear it every week from constituents, every week. And that, that they're not sure what's going on with the playground, they're concerned about the playground, that they, they are not convinced that the administration is committed to pushing this thing forward. There's a lot of that, and we don't, you know, we, we know what we hear here at the meeting. But it's been going on a lot of years, and it, it's really important. I mean, I will take my cue from the confidence of constituents, basically. If they're feeling like they're in good hands, great. So I just encourage you all to, to, you know, give us the tools to talk to them, and you do the same. And then, you know, and let's get through this so that people are feeling like they're well-respected through this. I don't, I'm not comfortable with pitting it against the middle school. I want to be very clear.
It's not about pitting it, Stephen.
Well, it's exactly what I heard.
It's about understanding what all of the needs are before we...
Right, but I heard you use middle school as the example, which would be pitting it against the middle school. I, I'm a big believer in the middle school needs a lot of help. I also heard very careful, I've heard very much during the, during the bond-building process that we have a plan for the middle school. It's okay, we don't need to rush it. We, as a board, express some concern about a few items that they had not funded, that the administration had not funded immediately. I think those things are a higher priority than they were. I mean, I'd like to condemn some properties around there and build an auditorium or whatever for the middle school, right? Like, I'm, I'm all for that. But the point is that, just want to be, I, I hear that there are many priorities in this district. I'm aware of that. And what I wanted to make sure is that we follow through on our commitments on this particular project, and we figure out how to do that. And then we'll have another project we'll have to do, and another one we'll have to do. So, that's all.
Yeah, anything else?
Do encourage people, if they have questions, encourage them to contact us. We've got, um, it's, well, I don't know what in town I know. It's, uh, do encourage people to get... I think they are, and I think you've been doing a very good job. I'm not... Yeah, no, 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 it's reiteration, that, that, you're absolutely right. That, that, I think we did a good job of sort of getting the schedule conversation under control, and I think all of this would count.
Yeah, no, I think you did a great, a great job, too, but, you know, unfortunately, you're inheriting a...
Yes.
You know, four years of patience where it's been, so...
We'll make it work. It's all gonna work. You got no choice?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
And I'm gonna, as we move forward, I'm gonna kind of do a worksheet like this for all the projects. It's about figuring out where we're at. We won't show Grant. Yeah.
Since some of the conversation, I could just feel Grant crawling over to the table physically.
This is clear to me. Yeah, that's what I, I think if I can understand it, maybe you'll listen to it.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Good night. Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, Lisa had asked a request for staffing by teacher, by kid size. That's why you got that, um, lots of numbers.
Use your names and others?
So I'm happy to try to ask any questions or take any questions. I can find out the answers later. Also, maybe lost in this, in the numbers...
It's a section.
Is the Montclair Roxbury enrollment data that I think Michelle referenced in a previous meeting of what we normally get right before budget season, and that was on our budgetary timeline to give out tonight. So, um, it's from Grant's office, uh, that is similar to what I believe you receive every year. So, happy to take questions, and it's up to answer them and/or get answers for you at a later date.
So mine has to do with the fact that since I couldn't figure out who the teachers were on that night, I really don't know how many students each teacher has. Because there are two teachers in last year.
Three.
Three teachers in last year. So, you know, when you look at this chart, it doesn't really tell you that. And when I look at that chart, I have the same problem that I had with, um... This doesn't tell me, for example, is one of those a special educator?
No, four including a special educator.
Yeah, but one of those, so, but I'll be able to figure that out as soon as I have, you don't have to answer all that now. Just when I get that.
So we have a .5 special educator here, who also does .5 intervention services. So she's a full-time teacher. And we have three classroom teachers standing next to her. And while it might not be exact, we have approximately 40 students here. And Katie?
What's up with the number of unique students? 3,116? I was interested in unique, unique sections, number of students and sections looks like. That's the whole...
That would be a question that I'd have to find out. I'm not sure what's so unique. But I can find out.
About 3,116?
Yeah, I'm not sure why.
Well, and if you, so when you carry it over to the other, that same column isn't all of them. So it'd be interesting to know what that person...
I can find out what that means.
I was saying that I wasn't, like, I was looking at teachers who are on the same team in the middle school that have a different number of students. I was just trying to, I'm just trying to understand this balance.
It depends on what you teach.
Well, if you're on the 7-8 team, if you're a 7-8 team, don't you have one team? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So like Mr. Humphrey and Mr. Taylor are a 7-8 team.
Yeah, they're all different.
But they have different numbers, and I thought they, of necessity, would have the same number.
Not positive on that. I'd have to ask how that breaks down. This information came from the, like, ASIAS system, the student identification system. So it might be that it's just classified differently within their per sect data. So that would be my guess around the answer, but I can certainly find out.
And these are absolute numbers, they aren't like weighted or anything like that? Yeah.
I mean, I can't, I can't believe that Mr. Taylor could have 140 students that's in...
Okay, to teach for a subject?
Yeah.
For one, that one 7-8 team could be 140 students?
No, there's not 140 students in Saturday, but it may teach that many individual students for, like, in math.
Because students from other teams come into that class?
Could be, I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't, I don't even know how to read this. I'm sorry. So if we just look at Union, which is a very simple model, and we just pull up, I don't know these, I don't know their positions, so I don't know what they do or what they do.
That's what I was talking to you in the beginning. It asks you to know, I actually could look them up for the high school because they're listed online, but...
But the other dates, okay, kindergarten teacher, fourth one down, here's 168 unique students divided by eight.
Yeah, I'm not positive, we're not not positive about that. I'm just looking out for you.
And then there's five sections, that's five sections of kindergartners?
No, so what that's referring to is, is, this is based on sect data, I would believe, that we have to report to the state. So that's breaking a, a teacher's day into core classes.
Yeah.
So she has five core classes, so, you know, ELA would be one, math, science, social study. You know, so it's, that's why it says, she doesn't have five sections of kindergartners, but she has, we have to report out in five different areas in kindergarten for sect data, how many kids are in there.
So she has 16 students and times five is 80.
Exactly. I mean, I think that the student number in sections, an average student per section...
Oh, that explains it for the others also. So they'll have a partial student if they aren't in every single section that that teacher's responsible for.
And it doesn't mean she sees 80 students.
No, she sees six. This one sees 16 for, but she has to teach 16 times 5, basically, in a day or whatever.
Yeah, so five different courses.
So it's like imagining that she's got five different classes throughout the day in the same 16...
Right, but what's important, so when you see a partial, it's because in those cases, this, she, there's not the same number of students in every section that that person teaches. So Christina Kane, you know, is a great example of that. So she has 16.6 averages, art.
Right.
Uh, she's teaching 24 different sections. So, okay, so then the important thing, if you really want to look at kind of like a workload in the...
Is that last column.
If you don't want to count how many different things they're responsible for, then it's just that last column, right?
So I feel like something, and I don't know that we have this data, so please, but something that would obviously influence the workload, too, is the amount of preps that these teachers have. If we have a teacher who teaches five sections, all the same class versus another teacher who teaches...
Well, it's different for high school versus elementary school.
Right, so...
So if they're prep, that, that prep conversation applies to middle school and high school mainly, but...
And then some of that's contractual?
Yes.
So we kind of...
All of that is contractual.
All of it is contractual, and...
Yeah.
Oh, so what, what is, what is in the contract right now?
Depends on the position.
What are we looking at there?
Yes, people know that very well, as a matter of fact, very soon.
So I'm curious for the high school, could you inquire? I noticed that, I figured out the high school, who does what. And so, for example, special educators have a lot less workload, and that certainly makes sense. Uh, there are two math teachers with a very low student section load, and I'm curious about why.
Say math. You ever take math class? I wouldn't have big load either. It's hard.
Seven kids?
What classes are...
I don't know. It's, it just so happens that the teach, those teachers that popped up were math teachers. So I don't know what classes it is. I'm asking for a little more information about that. I'm not saying it's not life, so I'm just saying a little more information about those two. Yeah, and he'll have that answer for you.
Yeah.
Can we just quickly look at the rock enrollment line chart? I think I understand this one, yeah. I think I understand. I just wanted to know, do you know if there have been, not in the new year we're adding on, but on the current, on the, on the closer in-years, have we seen any, any significant adjustments in our previous expectations for enrollment on those years? That's a hard question, but...
For Roxbury?
No, for district. So, you know, we were expecting, you know, let's see, last year we were expecting in the 2021 year to be this many students. Now we're realizing, actually, it's going to be different for 2021.
I haven't analyzed it in that way.
Okay.
I'd have to get these charts from previous years.
It's okay, and they may not exist exactly like this, but they're close. But there's nothing that you, that you became aware of that was like, "Holy crap, look what happened there."
No.
Okay.
No, I know that there's bubbles that are going to, um, really influence the middle school that are coming from UBS in terms of space and...
And they have been, too.
Availability. And keep in mind that things like the UBS numbers, future enrollments are based on birth averages five years ago, or, you know, like, so... That, that's not a real accurate number of what is actually, could actually come to kindergarten.
And that's what's driving, like, the 65, 68s, 55s, that I'm seeing, 20 through 23, that's...
It's a birth rate.
That's a birth rate number. So I was, I was looking at this, and I'm like, "Okay, well, we'll have this, this bubble you're talking about in the middle school." But then we, we also have this cliff, you know, we're, we're projecting like a 25-student drop in our kindergarten class between 1920 and 2021.
But that's based on birth rate. You don't know what's gonna move into the town.
These numbers are incorporating our historic creep up. We see enrollments, we see people joining in in the middle in addition to birth rate. Do we kind of try to deal with that in these, too? So I guess we would, right? So we're, so what we notice is that the birth rates are pretty, pretty good at the first couple of years, you know? They're pretty accurate-ish, but then what happens is that a few more students come in, and a few more students come in as the kids get older. And so those classes grow a little bit over time. So, whatever, it's just, it's just a rough number to give.
Yeah, yeah, it's not accurately at points, but it's just something for us to think about.
Well, I think it helps us see in general, we're not expecting drops right now.
Right, now it's saying, we've been growing, which is so unusual in the state. It's hard to tell or predict that the next house that sells, somebody's gonna have five kids, or they're not gonna have any. So that's...
I mean, the trend, I think, thus far has been, um, doing largely anecdotal, but they're kind of, the numbers, there are older people moving out, and younger people moving in. And I think part of it is, I think people are attracted to the community we have to offer, the school being part of it.
And the more we can sell our story...
The better.
About how fantastic we are, the better opportunity. We also don't know an influence about the merger with Roxbury. We have anecdotal stories of more realtors paying more attention down here. So we don't know that influence yet.
And then we also don't know if we're gonna see an increase in the speed of grandparenting, of dropping off the grandparenting in some way. So we could see some of those numbers come a little early. They won't come late, they can come a little early. Still, we'll end up in the same spot doing that. But...
That's a lot of kids at the middle school.
Yes, condemn some property and hope that's a new face.
Yeah.
This is a new conversation, huh? Something other...
The way Tito's are spreading that rumor, no one knows now.
And I just have to throw in, sad as it might be, if you are a senior citizen in your house you've lived in for 30 years in Montpelier, perhaps you can't afford to live there.
Thank God we have income sensitization, sensitizing in our tax code, so we don't have to worry about that too much. Oh, yeah, unless you're talking about the logistical side, no, no, no. The logistical side is not being sensitized, which is really quite weird to deal with.
Policy reading.
Eternal gratitude for eternal wrestling. Yes.
I did, I did notice, I have to just comment about this, that Ryan, well, Roxbury is on three-year duty duty.
I know, it's a...
He's not awesome, is, he is awesome, but I wanted to let people know.
We have to, in my quest to move on, I skipped over my...
Charge. No. Help the negotiator.
We switched that.
We switched that with what we prepared to go.
I missed the beginning.
So we're doing finance. Yeah, wait, I have a question, is, my, my only question is, do we actually have, is Grant actually a chief financial officer? Is that a position that exists?
He is my business manager.
So we should change that.
You should probably change it to business manager.
That's all right, there's no hyphen in the district name.
Yeah.
We did discuss a couple of things, and I'll bring up the first one, which is, I said we do the three-year district plan. I would assume, of course, we had a three-year district plan, and that we thought we needed one, so we thought that might be a lot of discussion.
I feel like we circled around and around this topic at the retreat, and didn't decide to require it, so...
I know, well, it was...
Well, I don't know that we can require it in a committee charge when we didn't.
That was, part of the discussion was maybe to get some clarification on that circular discussion.
Yeah.
We began this, writing this charge from the charge we had from before, which spoke about a three-year.
Right.
So we thought we'd bring it here to say, again, where are we? And we obviously can't review something that's not there or that you don't want.
How about we change it to review any relevant district plan?
Any relevant...
Any relevant three-year district plan.
Yes. There's plenty of those kicking around, so... Yeah, or do we just, do we just eliminate it? I mean, what?
Well, I think, I guess it would give us kind of the freedom to, as a finance committee, to be able to take a broad look at the district and say, hey, according to this, we're kind of doing okay, but maybe according to this, we're not, and...
I think that gives you the discretion without, without it, or...
Fair enough.
And as this board already knows, I'll always be talking about the three-year plan that we don't have.
So when that gets into that number seven, which, you know, it says, develop and execute a protocol to budget for board priorities outlined in the three-year plan, we could eliminate the outline in the three-year plan. I think it's important.
So, so the question is, we have never decided or we are not doing a three-year plan. Was that the first thing that happened?
Well, I mean, we talked about it at length at the retreat and didn't decide to do it.
So there is none because it was never resolved?
Right.
We didn't put it in any policy that we worked on at the retreat, so...
We have asked for it in the past, we just can't...
In past generations of the district.
Well, it was actually in the policy for Montlito for years and we never...
Right, which we still didn't have, but...
Right.
So then if it doesn't exist, what is the plan that this committee would reference beyond past budgets and the CIP maybe?
I have no idea, but why would we have a three-year plan?
Well, we could do the capital plan.
Yeah, I was thinking of the capital plan.
Before we get to something in the plan, on this bullet point number seven, develop and execute a protocol to budget for board priorities outlined in the three-year plan. The first part of the statement, the executive protocol to budget for board priorities, I am really inclined to feel like that is the budget policy that we passed at our last meeting. In all the iterations of discussions about budget processing and the budget protocol, I could be wrong with the way I interpret the budget policy that we passed, that kind of was the protocol, the way I expected to follow up with the budget process. So if we're not clear on the plan and our budget policy itself, essentially what we create or does serve the purpose of protocol to budget for board priorities, can we just scratch number seven?
Because the protocol is in the budget policy.
It's in the other policy, yeah.
And likewise, when it says to ensure a budget process, the second part of this, I would say is, when we had a little bit of discussion about this over the, now this last part is really in the budget.
Should, should this charge reference the budget policy then?
Probably would. What would we say?
We certainly should refer to, but we did take out, Ryan and I were having this discussion, and since it happened a while ago, we passed a fiscal management policy, EO one, a budget execution policy, EO two, and then along with that, this one, we did it so long ago, I had to go back and look because I couldn't remember. I just wanted to...
So, so here's my concern, just from like a state government perspective of like seeing a bunch of SOPs sit on the shelf, you know, right now we have all these different policies that have been developed because this group has a lot of energy for it right now, there's, there's a new board, thinking like ten to fifteen years from now, none of us might be on the board anymore, and somebody's like, somebody's, somebody's, somebody's looking at the finance committee charge, they're like, yeah, we'll put this together, nobody's referencing these policies.
These policies are, these policies need to be rewritten in about a three-year cycle, so they are, they are consistent.
Review.
And the exciting thing about this new board is this will be the first board I've ever had any contact with where everyone on the board has read every policy because I can't read every one.
I am concerned about the last number three because I did not understand that the finance committee would be responsible for recommending a budget. I think that's the superintendent's job.
It is a big question.
It is a big question.
Well, I was just, just a lot of thinking that we were going to cut one, the bottom from that bottom part.
Okay.
Wait.
What were your, what were your recommendations?
All three? I think we cut all three too, because I agree, I think it should be the superintendent that recommends the process.
Well, we adopted the process.
We adopted the process, okay.
Yeah.
So is this charge necessary?
Well, we need a charge.
We need a charge.
I think one through six makes sense. I think we can get rid of the...
One through five, or six is rewritten.
Six is rewritten. Seven reflect on the content of the budget, whereas one through five are more of the process or the, um, the structure by which you will decide on a budget cost. But the, six and seven is when the, when this committee would turn inward and say, do these reflect our priorities? What should actually be in the budget? So I think there's a big break between five and six, in other words. One through five seem uncontroversial. They're just good government. And then at six, it starts to see, now this group's going to actually tell you what's going to go in budget for this one. But I don't know if we, I don't know if we want that group to do it. I think we, we want that group to be kind of reviewing the numbers to make sure that they have all the resources in one spot, that they're available.
I mean, the board has a significant fiscal oversight obligation for the district, and I, I think, I understood the finance committee was to be, were delegating a piece of that to a small enough fiscal to be conducting some degree of fiscal oversight, someone looking more carefully at the numbers and assessing, you know, revenue and...
And kind of, a bit of a washout, come back and say, well, you know, we've looked at the numbers and here are some concerns, rather than, you know, kind of a truthing to make sure that, kind of on that line-by-line thing, that the information the board is getting to make big budgetary decisions are real, that, that they've, they've dealt down and they're seeing good numbers, and this, you know, so that kind of like higher level presentation that we've gotten in the past, we've got people on the board, we've dealt into those enough to tell the board, these, you know, you can trust these or not, but I think the decision-making and stay at the board, but, but the charge of this committee is to make sure that, that members of the committee have a confidence in those numbers, or a lack of confidence in those numbers, and they can express out to the board, and the board can make a better decision based on that.
I think Andrew's question is a good one, and this is a good discussion, which we talked about before, which was, why, why do we have a finance committee? First of all, we never had one. Then all of a sudden, it was there in a sort of tricky position. And so now, we're sort of saying, what is it you want? So this discussion is great to, what do you want the finance committee to do?
I think the finance committee should do exactly what you've just said. To be the, the smartest ones on the board around the budgetary decisions and financial things that have, we've made, so that anybody can come to, people on the finance committee, and a finance committee can answer a question, or know where to go to get it.
So look again at the numbers one through seven and see what you want them to say that you think says that.
Ryan wants to say something.
No, I was just going to say, like, listen to the conversation right now. I think what happened, and I'm not going to criticize Tina Andrew or myself, but, you know, we, we stole from the past. When we started drafting the committee charge, we started with the committee charge we had last fall. And the finance committee that we put together last fall had a very different task than what we're expecting the new committee to be working on into the future. And so I think some of this stuff was relics that we kind of liked and made sense, but we didn't totally feel comfortable giving the X or wasn't quite sure how to deal with for the future of the new committee. So yes, I think the, the theme overall does need to shift heavily towards the financial oversight role, rather than, we have kind of our hands in everything.
As the new guy, I certainly wasn't going to put a big X through the whole thing.
I mean, I think one through five is...
It works, it works very well, one through five, it's a nice neat set of tasks that requires quite a bit of digging.
Yeah.
And also there's a cool thing there about, as I said, for, for the community, we want to make sure we're good with that, but ensure the community has information or has access to information, so...
Well, now, I'm going to be careful of this because we did rewrite this saying, I wanted it very clear when we were writing this, Steve, to say, it's not the budgets committee's responsibility to tell the community about the budget, it is the entire board's responsibility. We'll be glad to, so that's why this is work with the full board, ensure the community is presented.
Yeah, we talked, Tina and I had talked about this a bit, or emailed about it a bit this past week. I mean, I'm, I'm with you, Steve, in that I feel it's really important when you look at this charge to keep the community in mind and keep that communication to the community in mind, but I definitely understand what Tina is saying, which is, this is really a responsibility of all of ours, it shouldn't just fall to the three people on the budget commi, committee to make sure that these issues are articulated in the community.
But I think that's the working with, because that's, the finance committee is to kind of report out, so the board is informed and educated about budget and financial matters that the committee needs to get up to.
So something that's not here that potentially can be here is, is capital needs as, as a piece of the overall financial picture, either, I mean, in a variety of different ways. For example, I'm not sure really, like, that the bidding process or bond spending or any of that is captured by what's here, and that's a piece of fiscal oversight. I'm not really, I'm not really sure whether it should be, but I just want it that, and then fiscal needs in terms of capital needs are another area where there could be some oversight by committee.
At least related to the bond.
Yeah, I mean, the bond is a whole area where we spend all this money, and I don't think it's in the budgets or the financials necessarily.
And it's murky to the public, too.
Why would, why would it not be in the financials? Debt service is in the financials.
Well, the debt service would be in there, but...
Bond repayment would be, it depends on what level of detail you're looking at.
The spend down of the bond.
Right, the liability assets sheet wouldn't necessarily be part of that typically, but it would be the income and expense piece, so you could add that in.
Would that be a charge for the finance committee?
Yeah.
I don't know. It's just another area where we spend money, you know, and have bidding processes in our committing.
It's probably not a reactive duty, right? Because what you're going to do is during a bonding period, you're going to, or the, a bond cycle where you're really looking at the bond, that's when it might become active, but then, you know, what's it, but then once it's in place, it's just debt service, and so there's nothing you can do about it at all. Decisions have been made, there's no monitoring to do other than to make sure it's getting paid, but, I mean, during the period of, of using the bond, you know, in the next couple of years, for instance, but, I don't know. There's not a lot of board action, is what I'm saying at those points for those ones.
Are you thinking when the district would go out to bond, that the finance committee would be involved? Or is it more monitored?
That's a really technical process.
Yeah, that's...
But it does matter for things like, you know, when we made the decision this last time about bonding, we had to, we had to look at the interaction of, as it relates to taxpayer responsibilities between our operating budget and our bonding, and like, what, what is realistic in this particular year? And they definitely wrapped right up together.
And, and, actually, I thought that's where you were going.
Oh, go ahead.
That's another really good point, and another place, what is, like, how the, the confidence in the, in the estimates that under, underlie the bond.
Right, before you go on.
Which is just what we were basically just talking about. If you don't have confidence in the numbers that you're using to build your bond proposal, then you end up in these discussions about how do we finish a project?
So I'm just trying to flesh this out a little bit. So, because I, I don't know how, how involved the board should be, so I'm just putting this out, but it sounds like, is there a point in that process that you think the board should be involved, or this committee should be involved with reviewing the district's actions?
It may be total hindsight, I don't know, but I, I'm thinking that it might have been helpful had we had a finance committee at the time that we were debating the bond, that was sitting down and getting a sense of where those numbers came from for the project estimates, if it was deeper into that.
And I think the administration was looking for that. I mean, I think they welcomed that during the development of the bond, right? It's, there's a point after which you're just like, okay, now just let us do our work, but there's a lot of confidence building going up to that point, and then, because it's all prepping to go to a vote. Just like, just like an annual budget goes to a vote, you have to build confidence along the way.
Yeah, because I think in those conversations in this last bond cycle, we were throwing around random numbers, you know, three million, five million, like, what with this, what with that? And that would be a position where the finance committee could say, well, three million will look like something like this, or five million might look like something like that, to have a better picture of how...
For, I mean, do we need a committee to do that? Because that's going to be, like, and we're talking to contractors about projects.
Or is that our responsibility to get you those kind of, like, would that be...
The details of...
...changes, or should I be getting that detail to, as a presentation format, rather than the members of the board?
I mean, I think it's kind of a prospective expenditure that's not, that seems to me a little different than kind of like people who sit down and give a handle of what the books look like.
I guess I'm still getting, well, I'm just sort of giving out this oversight idea, and not personalizing it, not, it's not about what a great job Andrew is doing, what a great job Libby is doing, it's about what structure does the board have in place to provide some oversight that when we go to the public and say we need five million dollars, and that five million dollars that we spend is going to build these seven things, what is enough oversight? Is it enough that we've just said, it's been presented to us by the administration and they've said that? Or is there, is there a role there for saying, that's a place where we should put a board committee on to, and maybe it's an ad hoc committee at the time, to dig in a little bit deeper into the confidence in the, in the estimates?
But don't these five actually reflect more on a monitoring of an existing budget?
They do.
Yeah, that's what, that's what, that's where the discussion came from, right?
Right, but that's, that's different than the prospective, like, if you think about both Libby's and Bridget's comments about the administrative role versus the board, I think in a, in monitoring, we're asking the board to become smarter so that it can do a better job monitoring, but in building a budget or building a bond, we effectively rely on the experts, the, the professionals to build it, to have good numbers, come in with good estimates, and we don't second, we don't have any, we don't want to do, we don't want to get involved to the level of second guessing the quality of the estimates, effectively, you know? What's a... They do.
Yeah, that's what, that's where the discussion came from.
Right, but that's, that's different than the prospective, like, if you think about Libby's and Bridget's comments about the administrative role versus the board, I think in a, in monitoring, we're asking the board to become smarter so they can do a better job monitoring, but in building a budget or building a bond, we effectively rely on the experts, the professionals, to build it, to have good numbers, come in with good estimates, and we don't second, we don't have any, we don't want to do, we don't want to get involved to the level of second guessing the quality of the estimates, effectively. You know, what's it going to cost to hire one more position in, you know, ARC or whatever? We don't want to get in there and figure that out. Same thing, we don't want to figure out how much it's going to cost to build a playground structure.
So, for number three, it says, report at least quarterly to the Montpelier Roxbury Board of Commissioners to ensure transparency and comprehensive discussions of financial matters by the full board. So, I know that's a broad statement, but I would say, think if this works, that you could say, if you had a concern at this particular point about something, we wish as a board, we could know more about the bond for the playground, or we wish we knew more about what construction, you could ask the finance committee to.
Investigate.
Investigate that, and that would be not a continual thing, it might just be something that came up.
Would you do that with this? With like, for instance, where we see that the bond, that the pre-bond estimates were off, we ended up getting bids, we found out that we're way short, we understand that we want to take some action to put some things back in, but we got to find new money for that, send that to finance committee to work with the administration? Is that a role for that? Is that when you would do that?
I don't know.
I think there's an easy fix for this.
Oh, good.
Good. Why don't we just add six? Other financial matters charged to the committee by the board.
It just needs to be.
So, if we've got a big bond, you want the finance committee to sit and watch this?
Review. Review the financial matters.
Add the board's request, add the board's request, yeah. But let's go to one through five. Okay, good. Goodbye.
Jim.
This is one year.
Tita, Andrew, Libby, I think you guys saw some, there's a one email response from Grant on some of this, I believe.
What's that?
So, we've changed, we're essentially going with one through six, with a change to number six now.
One through five.
Didn't we just say we're including six again, but we're changing it to the?
No, we're changing.
Oh, wow. Under the.
I'm sure, yes, yes.
Okay. We're comfortable that Grant is going to be happy with what's coming across here? Okay. That's why, the impression I had, but I wasn't, okay.
We'd like Grant to be happy, so we want to make sure.
Do we want to approve this now, or do we have someone type this up and?
Was it warranted for approval? Oh, right, no, it's, I'm sorry. I'm in policy.
It's a committee charge.
Do you want the other changes?
Oh, boy.
Yes, business manager.
Yeah, changing CFO with business manager, taking up the hyphens, removing everything after five and inserting six, which is review other financial matters at the board's request.
Yep.
I think this could come back in nice, which brings me to a point. This could come back in nice form for the next board, if it's not approved, you'd have it, which leads me to something that's going to make Libby greater feet again, which is.
We're getting past Keith Green's thought.
Okay.
I was thinking which room I can hole up and sleep in tonight.
This is a quickie. When Ryan and I were talking today, and we were thinking about the last fiscal management policy and the last whatever policy, and I went back to look, in my notes, which I have lots of, I have lots of policies that I wrote all over, right? So, would there be a time in which I could have a copy of all of the approved policies?
You think we should do paper policies, even though they're, they're online?
All approved policies are online on the board page. I also believe I've shared with all of you, and if I haven't, I've shared with some of you, a Google Drive of all the policies.
So, I'm, the only hesitation I have from our point of view is, I do love to have it in front of me in some, whether it's electronic or some other form, if we're going to talk about it. So, it's okay with me if that's where it is, but then you can't bring it up and say, remember policy X, and expect me at the time to see, you know what I'm saying?
I agree. I agree.
So, it was just a discussion regarding, you know, how we access things in our discussions and deliberations, and it is, I brought the manual with me tonight because I knew that the budget execution, the financial was all going to relate back to this finance committee charge, and, you know, I think, I guess the discussion Tina had a while ago was just simply, I am totally happy going paperless, as long as I have something that I can access to actually discuss about tonight at our, at our meetings. I know the Northfield School District, before they had merged, had gone and they had purchased iPads for all the board members, so that was their avenue to ensure that, yes, even though things were on the website during a meeting, things can still be accessed by everybody. I'm not proposing right now that we budget for.
We could just make 10 copies of the policies, that instead of us taking them home, like, come to the meeting, you know, like you, you have it there and you hand it back in.
Literally about my new leave.
Policy readings.
Did we resolve that?
No.
It's important to me, too.
I don't think there was anything, it was just discussion, I mean, they're taking action on or.
Not taking action on paper that isn't in our current packet.
Are there, at the high school, do they have tablets that, manuals like all of this and that?
They're carefully, they're armed guard at all times. Who knows when people go, right?
Well, I think, I would like to say, I don't think the discussion's done, but I think we could think of.
Yeah, I don't think of ways to, to handle this, and it might be just having common packets that the board can access at meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I do agree it's important, but I also think about it, probably come to a relatively least bureaucratic way to do it.
Yes.
Policy readings, and let's try to be hasty.
Well, one of the hasty ones could be that we don't have the superintendent's expectations in the packet, so I'm assuming we're not looking at it tonight.
We went back, Heather and I went back in the minutes today, because Heather caught it this afternoon, that it wasn't in the packet, and in the minutes, it said that Steve was going to make some revisions to it.
I think that's true.
And so.
You agreed with Steve?
Okay, so.
So, we missed, Heather and I missed catching up with Steve on that, so that's all right, but we.
It's done.
That's right.
You're bad at trying to be a good, okay.
I have one question back though. Last of the time questions.
Yeah.
On the second page, under C1F, I'm just going to read this to you, tell me what this is. Honor the time allocated on the agenda for long board meetings should be avoided.
I want it.
Now, I know you're intent, but what does this say?
You must have been there the whole time.
I know. I just meant the way it reads, not the intent.
Yeah, this would have been the discussions we had in the very first reading a year ago. It was really, the intention is, we do our best practice to, how should we say?
Stick to the agenda.
Yes, and.
My only question was, does it say that?
I, I think it, this doesn't really make sense.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it until now.
See why the time allocated.
I mean, I absolutely agree with it, I'm just saying it's funny tonight.
Well, it actually.
Honor the time allocated on the agenda.
Well, it seems like as if the time allocated on the agenda for.
It's for long meetings.
It should have actually. Then at long board meetings, get rid of the word for.
Just making two statements, we're getting.
Out of the time allocated on the agenda.
Here we go.
Here.
Yep.
And then we could do another one. Long board meetings should be avoided.
Stop and crack the head, you know, what was next to them?
Thank you, Ryan, for your work on this.
Two statements.
Wait, what are we doing there, really?
I think it's not even the time allocated on the agenda.
I delete the rest.
I delete the rest, because it's not, in fact, if anything, it implies that if there's time allocated on the agenda for long meetings.
We should honor it.
No, you should avoid it.
Right.
Yeah, you know, you're telling the back end.
Okay.
Sorry about that, please. Good, I missed it.
No, it was, it looked like there was some editing that got half done, and then got read 16,000 times.
I didn't see it.
Got ignored and, yeah.
Yeah, people understood it.
You guys don't say any real intelligent things.
Are we approving the policy finish?
Wow. It has to come back for the final.
I think that's the only other city. That's amazing.
It's a whole effort to see where it is, we can.
Because it didn't change a substance of anything.
Yeah.
Right. Well, actually, then, could, could the superintendent's expectations policy come back next time also? Because unless you change something, unless you.
No, there was going to be a change, I'm blanking on what it was, but.
I remember I heard that one, what you were talking about, but if you decided the change wasn't necessary, then technically, the superintendent's expectations.
Your point. Okay, well, why don't we, you and I will review that and see, and then we'll hopefully bring it back without a check, I think.
I think it was something very much. At the meetings, you and I asked the same exact question, and amusingly, you had responded to me the first time, so.
Sometimes you have to think about it a little bit.
Well, sometimes I just need to be oppositional, too.
Oh, really? None of us knew that about the state.
If there's not going to be a change and we're going to adopt it next time, I need to know by Friday.
Okay, Saturday. Check it out for Ryan, we have one tomorrow, and then we'll review it, and then we'll let you know this week.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move return. I second that.
I'll have a second. Third.
All in favor?